The Board will take formal action on payment of bills and other agenda items. I'll stand for the pledge?
Uh, the Olbridge-
Nevermind, nevermind, messed up already.
That's okay. The Olbridge National Board of Education acknowledges that the law of this state establishes that members of the public, including members of the Board, have the right to record public Board meetings using audio or video recording devices, provided that the act of recording does not interfere with the business of this public Board meeting. Therefore, the Board makes it known that any such recording is to be considered the private recording of the individual and in no manner represents the official record of this Board. The Board therefore takes no responsibility for such private recording and completely disavows any future use.
Roll call please.
Dan Toono?
Here.
Dunn?
Present.
Francisco?
Here.
Giordano?
Here.
Jodri?
Here.
Mizon?
Here.
Slade?
Here.
Solakowski?
Here.
Venkatesan?
Here.
We have a quorum.
Can we all stand for the pledge? Thank you. Next week, there'll be a moment of silence. Matt, would you be interested in reading the Code of Ethics next week? Okay.
We do, we do have an addendum to add to the meeting tonight.
So, do I have to make a motion?
Giordano motion.
Thank you. Mizon will second. Roll call.
Dunn?
Yes.
Francisco?
Yes.
Giordano?
Yes.
Jodri?
Yes.
Mizon?
Yes.
Slade?
Yes.
Solakowski?
Yes.
Venkatesan?
Yes.
Dan Toono?
Yes.
Resolution to accept the addendum added to the finance portion of the meeting is accepted, passed.
Any question on the minutes?
Minutes are forthcoming.
And we'll have the student rep next week. Do we anticipate recognition retirements next week? Okay. Mr. Sieden, do you have anything to report this week, or you want to wait till next week?
So nice being close to you. I'm coming out of my Jennifer Grey era. No, no superintendent's report this week, but there will be one next week.
Okay. Progress towards goals, we plan on working on that. Any correspondence for this week?
None for this meeting.
Special committee reports. We have two committees, I understand that. We have two committees that would have reports next week, correct? Do we know who's giving each report?
I can give to E I, K R, and Technology.
All right, hearing of the residents on any agenda items? Seeing none? On policy? Do you want to take over, or do I do?
You had, hello? You had discussions on bylaw 0155. The policies for next week, we've been over them all through committee in the first reading last month, so that they are on for a second reading next week. But as far as the bylaw for committees, do we want to discuss that now?
Yes, if everyone's okay with that, there's no objection. So, in getting ready for the committees this year, I was looking at 0155, the policy, I also emailed it to everyone. These committees should be reviewed every year, and the consensus amongst Board members and the public is that we have a lot of committees, thus leaving us to a lot of meeting nights. And in effort to try and condense this, my proposal and first reading tonight would be to combine curriculum and policy into one committee, have a finance committee that would include shared services and your long-term strategic planning. Because it's an RFP year, keep food services separate. Negotiations is separate. Operations would include buildings, grounds, technology, and transportation. Keep personnel and special services. And then make a new committee combining other committees called student life and have that athletics, extracurricular, D E I B, and cares. So, we can have conversation about this tonight, and then we'll have this go to policy committee next week. Any thoughts, conversations?
Madam President?
Yes.
I like the consolidation of the committees, I think it's very concise and clear. I think the grouping of finance, shared services, strategic planning, which all relate to one another, is an excellent idea. And also operations, including technology, that goes a long way as well, since they're all related. So, I'm in favor of the new committee format that you proposed to this policy.
Everyone can think it over. Policy committee will meet prior to our meeting next week, and then we can approve this policy along with the other policies listed in the agenda for next week. Any other conversation on any of the other policies? Okay. Moving on, curriculum and professional development. Any discussion? Okay. Finance, I would need a motion for item one.
Mizon will motion. Jodri will second.
This is for item one and two.
I about, the addendum, I apologize. One and addendum, okay. Roll call.
Jodri?
Yes.
Mizon?
Yes.
Slade?
Yes.
Solakowski?
Yes.
Venkatesan?
Yes.
Dunn?
Yes.
Francisco?
Yes.
Giordano?
Yes.
Dan Toono?
Yes.
Resolution one and two for finance passes.
Any discussion on the original item two through 11? Okay. For athletics, item one and two, any discussion or conversation? Non-certificated personnel office, items one and two, any discussion? Non-certificated personnel operational, item one. Okay. Item 21, non-certificated personnel other, items one through eight, any conversation, discussion? Okay. Onto certificated personnel, items one through three, can I have a motion?
Mizon will motion.
Francisco will second.
Roll call.
Madam President, discussion, can I interrupt?
Oh, sorry, discussion.
Yeah, just think about it. So, the item on the athletics, items listed for the coaches, I think this is towards the Unifi program, correct? Just want to make sure, this is not related to the Unifi.
Are you going back to, you said athletics?
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. So, the unified coaches are in another motion?
What's the other one?
It is separate from the coaches, the athletic coaches.
Any more conversation back on athletics? Okay. Moving back, any conversation or discussion on certified personnel, items one through three that have been motionsed? Okay. Roll call please.
Dunn?
Yes.
Francisco?
Yes.
Giordano?
Yes.
Jodri?
Yes.
Mizon?
Yes.
Slade?
Yes.
Solakowski?
Yes.
Venkatesan?
Yes.
Dan Toono?
Yes.
Resolutions one through three for certificated personnel passes.
Under certified, certificated personnel, items four through 15, any discussion? Okay, see.
Number 15 is the item you're looking for, Mr. Venkatesan.
Any conversation? Anything you'd like to discuss with item 15 on that one?
Yeah, I think, I think I had a conversation with Mr. Sieden earlier this week, just to clarify to everyone, right? I think we got the grant, but on top of the grant, we do have budgeted to support the Unifi program and have a continuity for the students. And we also realize probably in the next coming budget year, we will have to early account it. And I think we have to also discuss about how we can make it more part and integral, make it more integral part of offering, just like general ed students, the Unifi program to be offered for all students. Yeah, just a few comments.
So, just in summary of my conversation with Mr. Venkatesan, so we met with the OBA, with the negotiation committee, and members of SEPTA, and members of the Play Unified program. And we came away with an agreement that while the Unifi program, which started off as a buddy ball program, then went into a Special Olympics program, and you know, now it's with Unifi, it's gone through a series of transitions, and we all feel as though the next transition is to go into an organization where the Board will oversee the program, hire the advisors, that's not something we've done currently. Advisors were kind of recruited through other advisors under the bylaws of the Play Unified and Special Olympics. So, this way, we'll have continuity of the program going forward and the posting of, for the stipends. So, one thing that's going to happen between now and next year is that the negotiation committee in partnership with Mr. Parton and the OBA and their representation needs to get together and to establish stipends for Play Unified going forward.
Just real quick, just to follow what Kim was saying, so it's the $17,000 grant, and then we're kicking in, what?
Ten thousand. In addition, do we also put funds from athletics into there to oversee facilities and officiating for that, and transportation, usually anywhere between 6,000 to 8,000, so on top of the 10,000 we're putting in.
All good things. Any other conversations?
Yes, Mr. Sieden, so based upon the monies that we received in grants and plus the monies that we've kicked in as a Board of Ed through different line items, we fully fund Play Unified now? We fully fund it as it's established today. I understand Play Unified wants to expand and put other sports in, and we'd have to look at that going forward. But right now, you know, round figure, we are at about $35,000 in funding between grant fund, board fund, and board fund under athletics to oversee the programs. Is there a roadmap to expand to services that we have discussed? Because I have not been privy to it, and if there has been a discussion, I would like to get that information. At this point, it was a request to Play Unified to look into a unified bowling program. Kind of it all, you know, it all falls under the auspices of what's going on through the Special Olympics, Unifi program. You don't have to have other teams to participate in. Obviously, something like bowling is more scheduling oriented than having a basketball, because we use our own facilities for that. For bowling, we'd have to find a facility to allow us to use, we have to have other teams to participate. So, we're going to get started on that as soon as possible, schedule that, so we have participants and other schools to have a very robust program for bowling next year. And then the Board will have to work to fund that. Absolutely. The Play Unified is such a critical aspect for special needs children, the simple fact is social skills is a very unique component where a lot of our students who have the issues need that type of stimulation and that interaction. So, I applaud the Board and the administration for making these provisions to ensure that this program continues and it can expand in the future. Thank you. We also have to include the OBA and our members from our public stakeholders who made this a priority as well. Absolutely. Thank you.
Any other discussion? Okay. Non-certa, non-certified personnel transportation and transportation, any conversation, discussion? Okay. Supplies, equipment, and services, I need a motion for items one and two.
Mizon will motion. Jodri will second.
Discussion?
Done. Good.
Yes. David, could you just give us some brief background on pedestrian bridge repairs and rationale for the change order to move forward with our architects and engineer?
So, the change order came about, as a result, the original proposal that was presented by Takarski Millman was just to do their studies and to analyze and make the specifications. So, those were provided. It was about $25,000 to redo the specs. There's basically, the top of the bridge is sound, it's all the steel underneath, the structural steel that has to get replaced to make those repairs. So, the addition, the change order would be $1,350 to add this to our Department of Education project application. So, in order to pay for the repairs, we don't have the money upfront in our general budget, in our local budget. We would be using our capital reserve funds in order, the 10-plus million dollars that we have from the sale on Mikey Base, in order to fund the construction repairs for this project. In order to use those funds, we first have to add them to this project, our long-range facilities plan. So, that is a formal requirement that the state puts together, that if you're going to use any capital reserve funds to fund a project throughout the year, it has to be on your long-range facilities plan. So, while this was unforeseen, it's where we need to pay the project out of. And then, so that was the $1,300, and then the $4,000 would be Takarski Millman putting together the bid specs, sending the package out to bidders, and then kind of overseeing the bid process for when bids come in.
Is there a complete anticipated cost for the repairs?
They are working on the estimates right now. At that point, they're working with different contractors that would be interested, so they're putting a preliminary estimate to us together, just because we eventually will need to know and do a withdrawal from our capital reserve, and that will be an agenda item as well in the future. So, they are working on with, both internally with their own engineers and just talking to other vendors outside as far as a projected scope, or cost rather.
So, we don't have an estimate of the projected repairs, and we're going to leave it upon the bid process to give us what the job is potentially worth?
Well, we have to publicly bid it.
But can we get an estimator to figure out what it really costs before we leave it out to public bid?
That's what he's working on right now.
So, it's going to be estimated by our engineer to ensure that the bids come back within reason?
Right.
Very well. Thank you.
Any other discussion? Roll call.
Giordano?
Yes.
Jodri?
Yes.
Mizon?
Yes.
Slade?
Yes.
Solakowski?
Yes.
Venkatesan?
Yes.
Dunn?
Yes.
Francisco?
Yes.
And Dan Toono?
Yes.
Resolutions one and through two for supplies, equipment, and services passes.
Any conversation or discussion on items three and four? Okay. Miscellaneous, items one through six?
Yes, I have a question. So, for number five, we're making an amendment to the calendar, I see that, is it the primaries that were moved? Does that change the current date on our calendar? I think it's the week before that we're off, like are we swapping that out? Okay, so we're no longer off on the third, we're now off on the tenth?
Right, so that is a very good point to bring up to the public, because you know, they won't understand what that is.
Exactly.
But so, public law does not allow for elections to be held in a school with a police officer present within, I want to say 200 feet of the school. And obviously, that is very problematic for our elementary schools. While you may be able to have at the high school an election polling place where it takes place close to the gymnasium, 200 feet would still be on campus in the high school. But you get to some of our elementary schools, that would put a police officer off campus on Election Day. As you know, safety of our schools is my biggest priority. I would never recommend to the Board that we allow members of the public who are not vetted to have free access to our schools, to come into our schools and then be in the schools without having what we have as officers providing safety 180 days of the year, and that one day, you know, not have anyone there. That doesn't make sense, and it's advertised. Like, you might as well tell everybody, we're not going to have police officers in the school on this day. So, if you have a plan of evil, that is the day to do it. So, it doesn't make sense from a security standpoint, it doesn't make sense from a common sense standpoint. So, with that being said, the primary that was scheduled for June the 3rd is now been moved to June the 10th, because June the 3rd is a, is a holiday under Judaism, and the state has voted to move the primary from the 3rd to the 10th. So, we'll put something out to the public, obviously, we'll send a letter out, we'll put it on the website, but the public needs to know after this motion that school will be on, there will be school on the 3rd, and on June 10th, there will be no school for students, staff will have an service day, and we'll have to move professional development providers from the 3rd to the 10th. Any questions?
Yes, one more question. Do we plan to change the PDF that is currently up there? Okay, because I know I checked that thing like three times a day.
Yeah, we can't change it until you vote on it.
Right, nope, I got it.
I just had a comment on that. So, at the end of the meeting, we're going to talk about our trip to Trenton, but this is just another example of why people have to be more involved, because this bill, to change the primary date, got introduced and passed within a month with no objections and, you know, unnecessarily. And meanwhile, we can't get a transparent funding formula, so people got to get more mad and more involved in emailing our legislators to have them focus on the real issues of the schools. But we're going to get to that during old business. But I just had to make that point for this. Thank you.
Any other conversation on items one through six? Okay. Board secretary and board business? Any conversations? I had one thing, of course, I need to put it up. Nothing can be official until after the new committees are put out, but I wanted to share some tentative committee placements. And if anyone has concerns or thoughts, please share. And if, if this, if everyone agrees with this, then I'll get this to Joanne and David so that it can be enacted as of next Tuesday. So, if the proposed committees are approved, in the personnel committee would be Elena, Christina, Matt, and myself. In curriculum and policy would be Sal, Elena, Marjorie, and Jay. In operations would be Rich, Christina, Jay, and Matt. Student life would be Rich, Marjorie, Kiran, and myself. Food services would be Christina, Jay, Matt, and myself. Special services would be Rich, Elena, Marjorie, and Kiran. Financial, finance would be Rich. Financial, finance would be Rich, Sal, Jay, and I'm missing the fourth. I'll have to get back on the fourth person. Negotiations is Sal, Elena, Christina and Jay. SEPTA CPAG liaison would be Marjorie. President's council, I'm going anyway so I can go for that. The other position that I wanted to talk about with the board is the NJ SBA representative. We had it as two separate things last time. We had a Middlesex County and an NJ SBA. I think it's kind of, my interpretation was it was one, like, we have one representative that goes from Olbridge to the Middlesex County hearings and things like that. We haven't had reports. So is there anyone that could, that is interested in going to those meetings and representing Olbridge and bringing that information back to the board? I think it varies by state. I think it's, I shouldn't say by state. Most I've seen is are in Trenton.
I do believe the county ones might be a little more local.
That's right. I think I saw one in Woodbridge last time. Okay. Yeah, I think the ones I've seen, many have been, had a remote option also. Anyone interested in sharing?
That's what I was thinking too, because I'm definitely interested. I just don't want to make a commitment because we, I want to make sure that our board is obviously a priority. So if you want to split it up or if we even have to add a third person if we both can't go or something.
Yeah. And that, just kind of, you know, if you can't go, exactly, you know, just kind of like. The other thing I asked Mr. Wydell to do is have a folder, kind of like a drive. I'd like to see the committee reports kind of go into this drive by the chair, ideally within a week so that the board can look at it. If you have any comments, then you can email the chair with any questions because I don't think many of us discuss or think about what happens at the committee meetings unless we're there in this way. We can not all have to go to all the meetings, but still get the information and still have those conversations so that we come to the board meetings, so those same reports can be shared with the public. But as a board, we can get to see, it'll be deposit only, no comments because then it classifies as a meeting. But this way, it can, we can have conversations and move things. Any?
I did set up the folders. I don't, did you see the document? I just got to make sure it's a, I don't know if I sent you the document, but I made basically a fillable PDF. I had to make sure it's fillable and I'll just take a look at it and then, but I got to make sure it actually is fillable. So I know I edited it, but I'll send it over to you.
Can you also tell us who the chair is of the committee so we know?
Well, that's what I'm going to work on this week. Because I didn't want to assign chairs if someone had an issue with the tentative assignments. But, you know, you guys, you know, we can kind of start conversations. Some of these committees have worked with Dr. Hoker and kind of set up a calendar for the year so that the public already has that and the website has that. Once each chair, once the chairs are announced, if they can work with Dr. Hoker's office and if we can keep those dates, I think that's better for the public. But with the combination of some of the committees, obviously, some of that will change.
Jen, have you put thought into their frequency? Like, how often? I know we, it just seems like we had a meeting every week and every day of the week. Yeah, so, I mean.
Well, that was kind of the.
Or case by case.
Yeah.
Or committee by committee.
I think that'll depend on the committee grouping and what they are thinking. At one point, food service was every other month and technology was every other month. You know, now you might, with operations, you might meet more often. But that doesn't mean transportation, buildings and grounds and technology are all discussed at every meeting. You'll let the staff members know, hey, this is what we're going to be discussing so that they can prepare a presentation or answer questions. But that's, to me, what, you know, you guys as committee members, you guys figure out. You know, and I think it'd be cool if each committee kind of came up with a, once we come up with board goals, you know, how does that committee tie into the goals? Like, how do we move forward? So that was kind of my vision for this year. Thoughts, question?
Yeah, I have an idea. And I had mentioned this to Jen, and I don't know what everybody else thinks, so just throwing this out there. But I know we do have some dates set for committees and yes, the consistency would be there, especially if the public kind of has, you know, penciled those dates in. But I was also thinking that if we somehow can also consolidate our meetings, like, to certain days of the week. I know I am, this is ideal, you could pull me back down from the clouds because I'm floating away somewhere with this idea. But we have two meetings a month on a Tuesday. So I feel like most of us have Tuesdays kind of open. So maybe we could use those other two Tuesdays for one or two of the committees, the ones that are going to meet more consistently. And then maybe, I don't really know or care what other day it could be, but pick like a Thursday where other committees can kind of meet on Thursdays. Just to, I don't know, maybe try to somehow streamline for us, for finding some coverage for our kids, for the public and for them to also maybe find some coverage for their kids. Just, I don't know, just an idea, just throwing that out there. I don't know, have a life, but yeah, just an idea.
Madam President, I'd like to echo what Member Francisco's opinion. I think that will work very well. I know in the past, we tried to utilize Tuesdays and Thursdays as nights for committee meetings. I know it's based upon the committee chairs discretion. But I think if we aligned them on certain nights, I think it would do the public justice and also us as board members where we can make sure that we keep our calendars clear on Tuesday and Thursday nights.
So I know when I had brought this idea to administration, obviously, there's some things already scheduled so we can work around that. But yeah, if you guys as committee members and committee chairs, when we get to that, want to try and work around that schedule, you know, it seems to be echoed here. So I think that's a good idea. Any other conversation, discussion? Hearing of residents on any school district issue. Just make sure you sign David's binder or Mr. Wydell's.
Andrew Lewis, OBA. Not to throw a wrench in your committee planning, I just want to remind the board and administration that the new contract has a joint health and safety committee that has four members of the association, two members of the board and two members of administration. So when you're planning those committees, to just conclude that. Thank you.
Can you repeat that?
Yeah, it's a joint health and safety committee. That's two members of the board, two of administration and four OBA.
Okay, so if any members of the board would like to be, I probably shouldn't be talking now, but I'm going to anyway, are interested in being part of the health and safety ad hoc, just send me an email.
And I think it's, I have to check the line, but I think it's during the school day. So, thank you.
I'm closing public session. Any board member would like to speak on old or new business?
Yeah, I want to talk on the old business. Last week, I brought to the attention about the OSOP program. So Mr. Sittard, you know, and I spoke, I think, a few days ago. I think that is enabled now, so thanks to the school administration. And I let the interested parents know about it as well. I'm not sure it is official official, but I just want to let people know that it's been just a week, right? Last week, we brought it up and thanks for the attention. And I know Dr. Tuie is not here, but I think the team really did an amazing job to find an advisor for that club and enable the kids to go and participate in the health professional club. If you want to add anything more.
Sure, I'll only add that I want to thank Ms. Fazio at the high school. She's assisting with that as advisor. And it's really a great opportunity for young, our young students who want to find out if they have a feel for the health professions. It's a national organization similar to FBLA where students go off and participate in events geared towards the health profession. And we're going to go from there. We made it clear that, that anyone participating, they would have to have a parent go with them as the chaperone. It's off school hours, it's usually on the weekends. The parents would cover the cost of any hotels or anything while there. But we still provide an advisor. Myself and Dr. Tuie both told Ms. Fazio if there's complications in her schedule that we would assist with that as well and attending any events that which she couldn't cover. Sure. So it's great for Olbridge as well as the community to have, you know, our school with students who are looking towards a healthcare profession because that's not going anywhere.
Great job. Anyone else? Okay. I'd like to, did you want to go?
New business.
New business?
So as many of you know, it was posted on social media. Members of the board and administration went down to Trenton to speak up against, I mean, about the school funding formula. And we heard speakers from all over the state. And the consensus is that there's many districts such as Olbridge that have no other options for funding. The formula is flawed while others have a blank check so that they could basically waste the extra money that should be going to districts such as us. So as I mentioned before, make sure you email your legislators. I'll be emailing all of them because they weren't at the meeting. It was just the Department of Education, so. True, yes. Senator Owen Henry was there, so we appreciate him for that. Thank you, Mrs., you know. So if any of the board members would like to comment on that or have any suggestions. I remember one time when I tried to get my bill passed, we had a resolution supporting that bill. So if there's any other new bills out there for the school funding formula, we could show our support for it when the time comes. Thank you.
I'll just join in on that as well. It was great. I'm, I think we were a party of 12 that we went there and we were definitely the strongest district represented at this hearing to the public. We had, I'll give shout outs to everyone who was there. Dr. Hoker was there, Ms. Francisco was there, Mr. Giordano, Ms. Jodri, Mr. Wydell, Ms. Dantuno, Ms. Mazzone, Mr. Slade and Mr. Venkatasin and, and Ms. Flynn. And Andrew Lewis is there, Mr. Mizella was there, recording everything so we can document for the public. Because one of the things we wanted the public to know is what are we doing to address these needs? And it was a great opportunity for that. And yes, there were members of our public there as well who went down on their own. Mr. Lewis was there and that's what we need more of. We need more of our community coming together, working together for a cause and unifying. Even this meeting is very, feels a little bit more unifying. So that is wonderful. I also want to thank Kevin from Transportation. We took a van down and Kevin did a great job expediting our trip down there, getting us safely. And I think that's a great experience for our board members to ride the same buses that our students use so we know what they're going through. But one of the takeaways I want to take, you know, is that I just feel as though there is so much to be done with this and I, and I feel like Trenton, again, we had mostly, aside from Senator Henry there, and we appreciate him being there, we're speaking to members of the DOE Finance Office. And they're helpless without legislation there to support them. They need to do what we did. They need to get everyone in the room willing to work on a solution because a 2% cap, as we discussed, is not a solution. You know, you're looking at a 2%, I'm sorry, increase to our tax levy. That 2% is already swallowed up with medical benefits that, you know, we have, we're looking at medical benefits increasing 18%. No one in legislation wants to address or tackle that topic. They, no one wants to address how medical costs are just skyrocketing while they're trying to put financial restrictions on school districts, but allowing medical benefits to just go anywhere because, you know, they, you know, in my opinion, they are a special interest group and they pay a lot of money. So no one's going to put anything on, any controls on that. Transportation costs ever since COVID have gone through the roof. We're looking at over 20% increases in transportation costs. You know, you can't have 2%, your revenue is already gone when you have those type of increases. Fuel costs, how to operate their schools. So these are all things that, you know, are beyond our control. And at 2%, you're never ever going to get ahead. You're never going to be able to have, contribute what they feel is our fair share. We're always going to be under adequacy. And this is something that they have to tackle. Either the state has to find another funding source because, or start distributing money equally because I even think, as my friend Scott Feder said, that while it's the S2 districts now, other districts are going to be receiving the same situation because at that, at 2%, no one is going to be able to keep up with the cost of living and the cost of inflation and everything else going on. So we hope they hear us and I'm just appreciative that we're all there together. Thank you.
Yeah, just to add to those points, we also highlighted that year on year, we cannot continue to increase the taxes. And if you know, we have quite amount of seniors living here and they have a fixed income and their income does not keep raising. So how can we tax them, right? So we have highlighted some of those points as well that we need to be accommodative of the range of citizens here and make sure, you know, we don't tax them inappropriately.
I just wanted to add, it was nice that we all went down together. Bill's that camaraderie that we, that we're looking for. One of the superintendents said it was nice to be in a room full of losers, which was, but if you think about it, no one came to that meeting from a district that is in excess or surplus. You know, it was a room full of districts that were losing state aid. You know, a point that most people are trying to make is that we're just like in the repair mode. We're not in the enhanced mode of the district. So it's nice to see that, I guess misery likes company, but it's nice to see that everybody's going through the same pain. I would just like to be in a room to speak to the people that are making the decisions. Like, when we first got there, we're like, well, who's hearing us? You know, who's listening to us? So there was a voice. It's a nice, at least it's step, if it's step one. But I would like to see us get in front of the decision makers and, you know, let them feel our pain. But it was good. It was definitely a good start.
It seems to be a day of repetition because that's what we had all day with the speeches in Trenton. It was the same people saying the same thing. I should say, different people saying the same thing. But to echo, you know, kind of whatever one said, the camaraderie was nice. You know, I did end up like counting chairs and stuff like that. So there were about 100 chairs in the room. And if we had 15 people, 15% of that room was Olbridge. You know, we had like the biggest demonstration of support, so it was nice. Many of us did think we were speaking to the senators, you know, we thought it was a senator hearing. So thank you, Sal, for, for working on, you know, writing the legislation to the legislators. It's a good idea and we could probably all do that. But, you know, the time together was nice and, you know, the focus is that we're all here to fight for Olbridge. It wasn't just, you know, fighting for more funding, but we get the money, the amount from the state for state aid in late February, early March. And BAs across the state have weeks, you know, to make these decisions. And in my speech today, I said it was life altering because if we did end up going to half-day high school and back to half-day kindergarten, for Olbridge, that is life altering. So these are life altering decisions and numbers. And we hope the state can, you know, not only change the funding formula, but the timeline of that, so.
Jen, can I just say something?
Go for it.
So David had forwarded us an email talking about today and asking board members to go down and share their opinions. But in the email was also a link that people can, can use to send in anything that they want to talk about if they couldn't make it down to the meeting today. But we can all put the link on our BOE page because the public can also use that link and advocate for, you know, fair school funding as well. So we can put that there and then everybody can, can use that and help us by advocating for it as well.
I think that's a great idea and great point. Thank you. Okay. If there's no further comments, we do have executive session, so I just need to move.
Just one point on new business. Since we're getting close to budget season, as we all know, we're getting into that process. And I would make a recommendation to Madam Vice President and President to reach out to the township council. Please get a shared services committee together for the simple fact is that we will be constructing our budget and we spend an ordered amount of money helping the township. So I want to make sure we have that dialogue with them before we start constructing our budget. And I think it will be very helpful to us and the administration if we have that meeting before February. We're going to start knowing our numbers very soon. And I think we need to get this, this inconsistency and the portions correct regarding certain services. And I like to do it sooner than later. So if Madam Vice President and President could reach out to your counterparts on the council and see if we can get something together, I would much appreciate it.
David, how does that work? Like, I know when we attempted last year, it had to go from BA to BA. As President, Vice President, are we allowed to offer it or does it have to go back through you?
I can just be involved in the discussion at their request. The biggest thing from the township last year was that they just wanted an agenda, what we're going to talk about. I think the overall discussion was ways that we can work together. They wanted a more involved agenda than that, just because the players involved. They didn't, they wanted to have the council president, the BA with our board president and myself. So as long as there's an agenda, if it's going to be specifically taking, talking about shared service, whether the shared service is on tap or ones that we're looking to. But we have to come up with specific. we have to come up with specific ideas for those shared services. You can, you know, discuss your availability and I could put it towards the BA and as well as the township president. We really tried to get a couple of meetings last year, there was a few, we were at school boards, they had, you know, their availability was changed at last minute, so trying to get, you know, and then the holidays come, so we're at that point where I'm in duck period and we have a new board now. So if you just want to get together and at least get an agenda together and just put something out to, you know, our counterparts of the township, I can certainly do that. But I would ultimately be involved in, you know, helping that process.
Because it is such an important or big topic affecting our district, I'd like to have a little bit of discussion with everybody, like what topics you think should go on the agenda and then the, you know, the committee can, that has finance and shared service can fine tune that. But I at least want to offer the agenda topics to the whole board. Is there things that you guys have thought about or that you'd like to see discussed?
I'll be more than happy to put together a draft agenda that can be circulated. You know, I have a lot of institutional knowledge and years of understanding of shared services and what the Board of Education pays for in respect to what the township pays for. So I could put something together as a draft, I can circulate it to Madam President and Vice President, you guys can take a look at it and then determine who else can see it and then the whole board can chime in and then we can do a unified agenda.
I know when I was asking for, thank you for that, by the way, when I was asking for the meeting last year, I wanted to know what we, what services we share. I kind of wanted the shared services 101 with the town. Where are we, you know, what's the goal and kind of, that was my forethought with having the meeting, so we can work with that.
One thing I'll mention is with my predecessor and even the township's predecessor, there is certainly some unwritten, you know, agreements that we have, whether it's usages of parks or athletic facilities or, you know, the ice skate, skating rinks. So those are all different, both anti-heated, the BA for the township and myself, we're all about, you know, contracts in writing are the best. And we actually have one coming forth probably that we're going to add to the agenda in regards to payment of our, payment from the township to the Board of Education for covering custodians during aftercare. Before and aftercare, there was just an unwritten, or there was an unwritten agreement in which the township, we would bill the township, the township would pay us. And I think it was also an arbitrary dollar figure that was put out there and just from there just increased a fraction. So I did meet with the township recently, brought together some of our expenses, and while I understand the sticker shock value, we just had a five-year, new five-year contract for custodial and certainly trying to get as much dollar back to us, put forth an agreement with certainly a much larger increase than we would have ever got had we just been going the 3%. So we have that, Mr. Parton did work on it. We have it now officially done, right, in writing. So we have, are going to propose it to you guys for approval next week and then we will then send it to the township for approval at their following, I think their 28th, I believe, is their meeting. And if it goes, and then it's approved, then now we have an actual schedule and basis for the next, over the next five years, which is our current custodial contract for at least our custodial share during before and aftercare.
For me personally, I wasn't looking to rock the boat on anything, it's just to me, the town council and the school board, we serve the same community, so how can we present a more united front? I was just trying to connect a little bit, so that was my forethought with asking for it. Any other old business, new business comments?
Just one comment. Last week I mentioned that I'm going to share the goals and objectives that I'm thinking about, I did share with all the board members. So I did get some feedback from Elena and probably Matt, you also gave me some feedback. But I would like to see how we can, all of us contribute to that, tie it to the board objectives first to begin with and then, you know, share it with the school administration to take it further downwards, right? So that's something which I'm looking forward to hear from all of you so that we can collaborate on that.
Thank you. I did see the objectives and goals. I was hoping that the, Mary Ann, our school board rep, would meet with us so we can discuss it all together in person. Due to some scheduling conflicts, it's not going to be as soon as I was hoping. I'm hoping to talk to her this week to get some dates and work it so that we can actually have a full conversation, you know, not about, you know, one or two goals, but board goals, district goals, because that is another thing that we are behind on getting done, so thank you for.
Sure, thank you.
Anything else? All right. Motion to go into executive session?
Mazzone, motion.
Second?
George, you'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you to the public for coming and we will see you next week.